Called to order the work session of East Grand Fork City Council for Tuesday, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. City Administrator, you take roll call, please.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Wollstadt. Council Vice President Tim Riappel.
Here.
Council members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Dale Helms. Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Do have a quorum, sir.
See any quorum? Number one, consider approving request for off-sale liquor license. Penny, you're here. Do you want to step up to the microphone? Make sure it's on for her, please.
It is.
It is on, yep.
Hello, everyone. Oh, all right. So anyhow, the last time I was, is it on? Should I?
It's on, yep.
Yeah, okay. Last time I was here, I talked about getting like Humane Society and stuff like that. And just so you know, I just wanted to just tell you thank you all for all your, for the meeting and everything, that all the time and stuff that you spent with us talking. They had decided to leave, unfortunately, but I appreciate all the time. You guys were really nice to work with, and I just wanted to say thank you. But anyhow, I was, and because of all that, I want to make sure I asked you first, is an off-sale liquor license available or on the table for each side to open another location? Could be sometime in the next six months or year, but I didn't know, but I wanted to ask approval before making any plans or moving forward. So it would be an outside door entrance, probably in the mall and stuff like that, but it's not with the traffic currently with the theater, but a separate entrance. So just one, Megan had said to come to the city council meeting.
And if you, I could go a little bit about what the requirements are for off-sale liquor licenses. The state of Minnesota leaves the number of liquor licenses that a city can issue up to the city itself, so we, the city council can pick on whether or not they want to limit the number of off-sale licenses. We have researched all of our records. We cannot find any action that the council has taken over really any years in the history here, limiting the number of off-sale liquor licenses, which theoretically means we could issue as many as are requested. So the, so the first question is, is yes, there are off-sale liquor licenses that are available to be given. The second one is, is then they just need to meet the requirements for an off-sale liquor license, meaning there must be an exclusive public entrance that is not located inside of another business, and that the owners may only hold one off-sale liquor license. Currently, they have on-sale liquor licenses, not off-sale, so they would, so they would qualify. So as long as they meet the entrance requirements, I don't see any impediment to giving the on-sale, excuse me, off-sale liquor license. I'll take any questions you may have.
Any other questions?
I think we're probably going to be favorable. There'll be some top number that we would want citywide, right? There would be some top number that we would want of liquor licenses throughout our city, but I don't think we're there. But I'm just, for the, for the record, I would say, you know, historically, they have set some limits just for that reason. You wouldn't want a bottle shop on every corner all throughout town.
Agreed.
And so I don't think we're at that point, but I do think there is some top percentage or top number of liquor licenses for off-sale that we would approve.
And currently, there are two off-sale liquor licenses, meaning full liquor licenses, where you can get beer, wine, liquor, that kind of thing, and two, three, two off-sale liquor licenses, which are typically convenience stores that will sell beer. So we have four altogether, two full on sale and two three-two on sale.
So from us, you're looking for?
Just before I make any plans or move forward or get estimates, it may or may not go through, but if I do, I just want to make sure that there's nothing in the way and that it would be okay with the city.
There's nothing in the way right now, so.
Okay. She said to come to a work session, so I wanted to make sure I dressed everything because I didn't want to run into any problems.
What guidance would we give to her as to where in the whole sequence would she make a formal application for liquor license? Would it be before she has all the nice blueprints for the store, which you spent fifteen thousand dollars drafting?
Right.
Blueprints? Before she sets two-by-fours and starts framing walls? Where in the sequence would we want to have her come back and make formal application and full approval for her request? What guidance would we give her at this time?
Well, I guess I can answer, I can give you some, I guess my suggestion would be really anytime she's comfortable, she could bring it, bring it in. We necessarily wouldn't need to see the design or, you know, blueprints or any of that kind of thing. That really doesn't, doesn't follow into what we require. Really what we require is that the company can only hold one off-sale liquor license and that the, the door, it has to have its own separate ingress and egress, meaning you can't, you don't, through the public, meaning, you know, you, for example, like I'll use Hugo's for example, you know, they have to have their, they have their own door that accesses there. You can't, they can't have their own door, meaning where you go into Hugo's and then into the, into the off-sale. So if they, so it's pretty simple requirement. So if she meets those requirements, then she qualifies for the off-sale liquor license. So she could do, you could do tomorrow if you wanted to.
Okay. And then I would just apply at the city?
Yep.
At that time?
Yep.
And how much do they cost?
Oh geez, you're going to ask me that?
Oh, you're like, please don't ask, please don't ask. I wasn't sure, you know.
I guess the auditorium would have to take a look at.
Yeah, it's, I think it's.
I didn't look for those.
I didn't either, but.
It's a couple, I know our, our on-sale liquor licenses are significantly cheaper than Grand Forks. I think it's maybe a couple hundred dollars.
I know the four thousand dollars for the on-sale.
Yeah, I think off-sale, I believe it's just a couple hundred dollars is for off-sale.
Okay. All right, that makes a big difference. So yeah, just looking for options, and so I just wanted to make sure that I did everything in the correct order. And is there any zoning issues? Just checking.
Nope, it is, it is, it is.
That's all good?
It's an allowed use, yep.
All right, thank you. And that's mostly what I wanted to know.
You can always call me.
Yes, I do.
You could have, you could have called and asked me, but Megan called me.
If I would have known, yes. I would have, but that's why I came here tonight, is to make sure that I follow the proper procedure, and that's what I want to do.
Right, right, no. But, but yeah, no, it's a, it's a permitted use, and Megan asked me before she put you on the agenda.
Okay, because that's why I'm here, is like, I'm new business owner, and I haven't, I want to make sure I follow the rules correctly. And so I'm a rule follower, and so I just want to approach everything in the right order. So that's why I'm asking first, to make sure that there's no problems, you know.
And all of our zoning uses are on our website, so you can feel free to hop on there and take a look, because all of them are on there. So I give you other options too for the building.
Okay, wonderful. And was that ever passed for the Humane Society, or did that just get tabled? I was just wondering, because it was put, put forward.
The Humane Society never asked us to push it through.
Okay, because they laughed, then about forty-eight hours of the meeting, they decided it was, they couldn't wait because they needed an open location. So I understand. So I just wanted to make sure that, because she said she might revisit it in a couple of years.
Well, I guess if you're asking if the zoning ordinance was amended, no.
Okay.
It was not amended, no.
No, no.
We asked her, I mean, because they have to put in a request for that.
Okay.
And there was, there's a lot of Department of Health issues with bringing animals across the border, too.
Sure, sure.
So it wasn't, it wasn't going to be an easy add to the zoning.
Okay. So if she does approach in the future, then I know that we would have to start the process from the start.
We would, and we would have to review with the state.
Okay.
Because there's, the states are very specific about bringing animals across the border.
I, yep.
From state to state.
It's a good learning experience.
Yes.
And we filled the space immediately, so it was fine. You know, it's, we're all good. It's just, you know, it was just a bummer. You know, it's like, man, I felt bad that I didn't know. So that's why I want to just approach things in better, so that I don't put you guys on the spot or try to push something through faster than you need to, just to give you the time and the heads up. So that's all I had. Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Okay. We had the, do you guys, like, we had the event out back for the music and stuff, the festival and stuff. It's just a couple little things I just wanted to ask. Do you guys approve that, or is that somebody else?
City council approves that.
Okay, so it was wonderful and everything, I'm glad it was there. I just had a couple things I would like to ask. Our garbage was completely full by Saturday, so we couldn't even bring our garbage out on Sunday. Is there any way to have, like, I think all the vendors and stuff use our dumpsters to deposit their garbage possibly? I'm not sure, but our, all four of our dumpsters were moved, but they were completely full. And so I was just wondering if there's any way they can come and empty those, or whoever's sponsoring the event maybe could empty those for us, because we pay it personally.
As far as, yeah, with that, I guess I would recommend that that, we would add that to one of the requirements for the event, is that they.
And I'm sure they just thought it was part of the event garbage. I mean, why wouldn't they? It's sitting right there. So I mean, why wouldn't they think it was part of it?
We do things like where we require porta-potties and that kind of thing, we could, we could require garbage dumpsters as well.
It was just, it was overflowing, and we want to make it as pleasant as possible for the people there, so.
Jason, you got something to add to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we moved them just so that maybe they wouldn't put stuff in there. And the vent coordinator did have.
Yeah, we moved them so that they, that maybe they wouldn't put stuff in there. The vent coordinator did have their own refuse company come in.
Yeah.
But next time, we can try, I don't know if those particular ones, we do have dumpster locks for some of them, so maybe on those type of evenings, we could just lock them and open them up the next day.
Maybe we could just lock them for three days or something.
Yep.
And I don't want people just throwing garbage on the floor. That wasn't the point, I just, we couldn't actually even take our trash out on Sunday because it had to stay in the garage because they were, they were mounted. And so that's not good for anybody.
Sure, yep.
And so I think it was just mostly people just thought that they could just bring things there. And I don't blame them, like I said, it's right there on your entrance in and out, so it was just something I thought I would ask.
And if by chance that does happen again, just give us a call, and we can.
Yeah, yeah, and it's not, and I would be happy to work with it. And then, is there anywhere to designate employee parking? We have a lot of employees, so does Blue Moose, and they were parking right on the street next to our building because they didn't have any place to go. If there was someplace like the library or like a, my staff would be happy to park for those three days. We just didn't have anywhere to go. So they were taking a lot of the event parking, and they would prefer not to, they just didn't know where to go. So it was just something to ask, and I know Blue Moose has a ton of employees, too. Their employees, again, were just filling in the spots, and we'd rather the customers not walk, we would rather that they had closer parking. And we're here first, so we would take the spark, the parking spots. So just something to ask.
We actually do have a meeting to discuss this topic, so I'm glad you're bringing up these points. It's scheduled, I believe, September thirtieth. We're going to be talking about.
Okay.
This issue, so these are, I'll make a point of writing these down.
Yeah.
And we can bring those up at that time.
Thank you.
And I want to apologize for the, for the trash. Myself and a couple of members of public work staff met with a couple of the event coordinators beforehand, and I thought we had that all worked out.
Sure.
But I think they may have been overwhelmed with the amount of trash they had.
No, you know, it's great.
I worked the event, and I think they.
You know, it's good that so many people came. That was really good, you know? I was just trying to say, like, you know, like you said, like you said, maybe we can lock them or something, but then are they just going to throw it on top or next to it? But anything we can do, it's just something I noticed.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then, yeah.
With this being the first time at this location, I think we definitely learned a lot of lessons this year that hopefully we can improve on in the future.
Yeah.
And these are a couple that I'll absolutely make a note of.
And the only other thing is, the country music seemed to be fine, but it has, it's right outside the theater, and you can hear the music inside the theater. When the movie's on, it was fine, but when, you know, on like Fourth of July, we close. At, our last show goes in at eight, because you can hear the fireworks and customers come out and complain, and you have a band right outside our door. And so the country seemed to be fine, but when, I live right there, too, so when, I can hear it in my apartment clearly, but the theaters were pretty good as long as the, the movie was on. But if it was off, you could hear the music. So I just wanted to mention, you know, it's like, country music was great, but if you had anything louder, it may cause a problem for me, and I'm not trying to be mean in any way. It's just, my business is a block away, and you seriously can hear it inside the building. But I was okay with the country because it was quieter, you know? But if you get anything loud with drums or, you know what I'm saying? It can escalate in volume quite a bit, and it might actually cause a little bit of a problem for me. But I just thought you mentioned it because who would think about it?
Yeah.
You know?
We'll make sure they don't bring in Metallica.
Right? And that's the thing, is, is like, you know, that, like, that is way different music than the nice country vibe. So if you have rock and roll, you might have to move it over, and it's not to be mean, it's just honestly, you can hear it inside our building.
Understandable.
So anyhow, but thank you for putting on the event, too. I thought it was great.
Thanks, Penny.
Yes, thank you very much for, for listening.
Thank you.
Great. Should I shut this off? Yes?
The annual fee's a hundred and fifty bucks for off-sale, but that's not the, I don't know what the application fees are.
Okay.
It's a hundred and fifty bucks.
Thank you very much. That's good. Do you want me to turn this off, or are you leaving it on?
Sure.
Okay, all right.
Okay, number two, consider requests to apply for funding for outdoor recreation, tourism, and travel. Reed.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Before we jump into the agenda, item Mr. Riappel asked me to just make a community reminder, and I'll forget if I don't do it right away. We have a pickleball open house tomorrow night from five to seven P.M. at the O'Leary Park Courts. So that's an open invite for anyone. It's free and open to anyone in the community, all ages. We'll have some refreshments there, but come out. The pickleball club will be there as well, but come out and, and learn a little bit about what pickleball is if you haven't played it before, and check out the project we did this year. The courts turned out really nice, so thank you for reminding me to do that. All right, on the agenda item, so I think really tonight, I'm just looking for any feedback and open discussion on this funding opportunity we have. Through the American Rescue Plan, there is a total of seven hundred and fifty million dollars allocated towards outdoor recreation, travel, and tourism. And of that seven hundred and fifty, two hundred and forty million is entered into a competitive grant cycle that is open for municipalities, counties, nonprofit organizations to apply for funding in funding amounts of as low as five hundred thousand dollars and projects as much as ten million dollars to apply for that will help boost that category of the economic market, outdoor recreation, tourism, and travel within the region. So that's the two hundred and forty million is nationwide, United States-wide. In some discussion with Jim Repka with the Northwest Minnesota Regional Commission, it sounds like we, we are part of, Nancy said District Eight, he refers to it as the Chicago District. That is Minnesota, Illinois, Wisconsin, and I think maybe Iowa. Within that district, Jim is making it sound like there's going to be twenty-four million dollars allocated to that district specifically of the two hundred and forty million. So that's the pot of money that we're kind of looking at if we wanted to apply for any funding for this through the American Rescue Plan. That would be what would be available for us to apply for. In some discussion with Jim, he contacted me, I think a couple of months back, when we were talking about our LaFave Park application for the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails Commission, and wanted to just learn a little bit about that project and asked whether that was something that would be fully funded by that grant if we were to receive it with the application we made, and knew that we had a master plan and that we'd gone through a master planning effort a couple of years ago, and asked if that's something that may apply to this fund. So we've had a couple of phone calls in regard to LaFave Park and the Red Lake River Corridor, outdoor recreation up and down the Red Lake River within our community. Jim has talked with his direct supervisor out of Chicago, out of the Chicago office, and they feel like our project and our master plan is one that fits well within the, the goals of the funding source, the way that the American Rescue dollars are labeled to be used to promote outdoor recreation and tourism. They think that this project kind of lines up well with that. And so they are, are open and excited to see an application from us if we choose to do that. So with all that said, I just wanted to bring it forward. There is a local match. It would be funded eighty percent by those federal dollars, and we would need to come up with a twenty percent non-federal funding match. We are not a hundred percent certain, but the direction I've received so far is we think that because our, our local dollars that we would already have committed to the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails application are already local funds, and even if we were to be funded by Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails, that's state legacy dollars, those two funding sources, we believe would qualify as the local match for this eighty-twenty split on the federal funding. So if we want to boost our application another step further on the outdoor plan we have, we may not have to commit any more local funds than what we already kind of committed to with the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails Commission. I'll get more clarification on that, but that's what I understand of it so far. So the, the question for all of you for discussion is, if we want to apply for this funding source, number one, or if we should continue to pursue it, number two would be if, if the answer to number one is yes, then number two, the two scenarios I see are, we either look to this funding source and the application towards this funding source to boost the, maybe the amenities and the infrastructure that we've already applied for, as, for example, add-on to the amenities we've already applied for through Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails to commit to the, our entire kind of master plan as it relates to river access in our community. That's one option, or the other option would be that we wait until, usually it's February, we hear whether or not the state is going to recommend funding for our application that's already been submitted. If they would come back and say that they did not recommend funding sometime in February, this grant application closes March thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two, so we'd have to work feverishly, but to be able, we'd, you know, maybe have three to five weeks to put an application in for this, to seek funding for the, the application towards, I'll call it Phase One. So those are the, kind of the two scenarios. If we wanted to use it as an add-on amenity, if that's the direction, if you have any thought towards that, I could have some examples or some ideas off of the master plan we initially put together in two thousand nineteen to go towards that, but I think with that said so far, I'll just see if anybody has any initial thought or direction. And then just remind everyone, it's a federal grant through the U.S., so it is a very extensive grant application and process to go through it. So if it's something that we want to pursue, you know, it's something I should start working on rather soon to be able to be prepared, even though the deadline is on until the end of March.
Any questions?
I have one. The people that you've spoken with, Reed, did they say, you really need to do this? Your, your program is a really good fit for what we're trying to do here, or do you feel it's, it's a bit of a long shot? What's your sense of it?
It's a great question, thank you. I think it's in between the two. They, they came to us knowing about our project, they reached out to us. I sent them a, a two-page summary, a written summary of what our LaFave Park master plan and Red Lake River Corridor plan looks like, and said that if it was all to be funded, it's probably in the area of three million dollars. They took that back to the Chicago District Supervisor. He reviewed it, and the feedback we got from his review was that he didn't feel like a three-million-dollar award was realistic, but felt like that he would like to see us submit an application for our project somewhere between the five hundred thousand and one-point-five million area. So they didn't feel like they would be able to fully fund our entire master plan, but thought that if there's important pieces of it that really boost the infrastructure and river access, that those would be areas that they, they felt like would be highly qualified to meet the criteria. Now, with that said, they certainly didn't say that you submit the application and it's going to be funded. They didn't go that far. They've been very open through the dialogue we've had, that it, they feel like two hundred and forty million sounds like a large number, but when it's divvied out amongst all fifty states and the way it's going to be sought after, it's going to be very competitive to be able to be funded.
My gut says we should do it, and that I'd do it in a, in a more methodical pattern, you know, coming in now and getting it started versus trying to do it under the gun. You don't ever do your best work like that. So that would be my sense of it, just from what you've said.
Okay, great.
I don't know what anyone else feels. By the way, Mr. Gall said, this is the office that we went to. That was the federal EDA in Chicago, Mr. Sawyer, where we all met about the forgivable loan that we went to way back for, that was actually for the Riverwalk Center.
Yep.
Same, same building, same agency, federal EDA, Chicago District.
Different people?
Probably. That was close to twenty years ago.
It has been a long time, yeah.
Question for you, Reed, just so I can kind of get up to speed on the history of this project. In the packet, there's, there's two separate site plans. One is substantially more developed. I assume that's the master plan that you refer to. And then the second sheet is scaled back substantially. It's the, it's the mill and overlay, and then, you know, essentially the boat dock and parking lot. That, that second scaled-back scope of work, does that fit in that one and a half million dollar kind of target number feedback that, that you got?
It does, yes. So the, to answer the second question first, the scaled-back drawing, that's the site plan that we used for our application this summer to the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails Commission. So the total application that we submitted to that was one-point-three million roughly, one-point-two-nine. So our local, if that's, if that was to be funded, this funding cycle by Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails, that's where our local match would be in that three hundred and twenty thousand area. That's what we've already committed to funding locally through resolution a few months back. The update on that I have is we have a site visit scheduled for tomorrow morning with the commission members to look at LaFave Park and that, this, this proposal we submitted. The larger site plan, this was developed in two thousand nineteen, working with Woodseth. We went through kind of a master planning process for the entire park area, and it has evolved through the last couple of years simultaneous with the funding application to Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails. And it's, it's been kind of broken apart into pieces to be able to make what we as a community felt like we could absorb from a local match perspective to make that application to Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails fit. So this, we've never applied for funding for this entire master plan as it's shown here. That included kind of a lower road or access road with walking trails to get to more developed shore fishing sites through LaFave Park. That would, you know, it certainly entails a lot more work, but that's, this is the first concept that Woodseth helped put together in two thousand nineteen.
So for the program that we're looking at here, is it for everything up and, up and beyond that we've already passed with the resolution? Or is it the entire master plan altogether again is just another shot at it?
Yeah, I think that that's really still open for us to determine. And I, I'm, to a degree, looking to some feedback from all of you on if we apply for this EDA funding, how we want to apply. My feeling would be is that if the ti, in a perfect scenario, and I don't know whether or not that's realistic with, I just don't know the timing of all of this, if it can be, but I would love to, before we would apply for EDA funding, have a better sense of whether or not we felt like Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails was going to fund our initial request, the one-point-three million. If the, if Parks and Trails is going to fund the, our two thousand twenty-one request at that amount, or some degree of that amount, they sometimes have the ability to break that apart and say, we'll fund these elements of it, but not these. To me, it should be nice to know that before we finalize whatever our application to the EDA funding would be. And then we would essentially add on to the, use Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails funding as, say, a Phase One, and then seek additional funding to get closer to what our master plan is through the EDA, and whether or not there was any other elements up and down the river trail that wanted to be included with that. You know, I think we have time to have that discussion and figure out what's most important to be included. I don't know whether or not we have the ability to get the entire master plan. The price that was put together in this two thousand nineteen plan with Woodseth, you know, is, is three years old now. We haven't blown the dust off that. I haven't asked them to do any updating. I wanted to get some feedback before we even took that step. We haven't blown the dust off that. I haven't asked them to do any updating. I wanted to get some feedback before we even took that step.
Last question for me anyhow, and then there'll be one more after that. Um, has the ship sailed on the possibility of, of making a marina down there? Um, Mr. Riappel and I were at a, at a local establishment not too long ago, and that was brought forward by a community member again. The possibility of, of doing a marina where you'd actually have a little channel and then maybe an area with some docks, you know, away from the river itself. And folks could, you know, hop out of their boats and maybe do a little shore lunch or whatever it may be. Or has that ship sailed?
I don't know that I can answer that. I have no idea. Um, I love the vision of that. I don't even, I'd have to look to other people. I don't even know where we'd go to get that answer. I think I'd lean on Mr. Stordahl or.
Never discussed hardly at all, except for you at that meeting.
Well, we. I know Mr. Vedder has asked me about it before too.
Yeah, several years ago.
Yeah, an older gentleman in, in town said that there used to be one down there and that's way before my time. So I don't remember it. But, uh, the, the benefit of that is you get out of the current.
Yeah.
Cause that's what a lot of the fishermen are complaining about is launching their boat into the current is a problem. So if you could get back into the marina, uh, there'd be ongoing maintenance, I'm sure, to keep the, the access open as it fills in.
Yep. There is, I know in the new design, they pull it in deeper. Where you would actually launch is a little further from shore to, to get out of that current. But I, I like the marina idea if it, if it was, if it was feasible.
I can start to ask some honest questions. I've, I know it's been an idea and a vision. It would be, right, I think I'd have to lean on Mr. Stordahl and Mr. Embry on where we'd even go to see if that's an option.
No, don't spend a lot of time or money on it, but if, if it's even remotely possible, then, then, then bring it back and say, you know, it actually isn't as silly an idea as one might think. If someone else has done it not too far away. Cool. Yeah, just.
Gilson has an offer there really.
Okay.
I mean, they have homes all the way, but they don't pull like we do either, but.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm done.
You are done. You have what you think you need or?
Sure. I've, I've got enough to start running.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. Number three, request for direction on preliminary levy. David and Carla.
Yeah, I'll just get this started just real quick and then I'll turn over to Carla on there. And I, really all I'm going to bring up is just the, the reason this is before the council tonight. And, um, what we're looking for some direction on is the fact that the preliminary levy needs to be approved by September 30th. Um, and just to remind the council that what we submit for the preliminary levy can go down, but it cannot go up. So with where we're at right now, um, after some discussion with Carla and, um, some feedback from the department heads is kind of where we're at. Um, and what it's looking like, we are recommending, uh, setting the levy at eight percent for the preliminary levy with the idea that it still can go down. However, that still gives us some room, um, based on some of the unknowns yet for, um, where we're going to be at, at, at the end of this year. So hopefully I did that some justice, Carla.
No, you did a great job on that. Thank you.
Anything you want to add to that?
Um, the, the only thing I want to add to that is that this also gives the opportunity for when the tax and truth and taxation comes out, we can look at those properties that we did to see what that increases. And, um, like it said on the RCA, I did, I know in the past, you know, inflation was down to like one to three percent. And, and right now it's like 4.2. Um, I know Crookston is looking on maybe 10% levy on preliminary right now. So this would give us a little room to see where, how it affect properties if we did the eight percent. Because I know on, on the past years when we did five percent, you know, some of them was only one percent or three percent. So it'd be nice to see what, you know, falls into the mix of new properties that we're taxing.
I think we've made a commitment. Whenever we talk about these numbers, we always make that point once again, which everybody around the table here knows. That number eight percent, just as you said, it could come down, but it's also a gross levy that would be increased. Meaning that the effect on each individual property owner would be less than that for sure because of community growth and other things. Um, unless your value happened to see the big increase in valuation in one year, there was a catch-up adjustment there. But the goal is always to stay, you know, to the individual property, to the individual family, closer to that rate of inflation, which as you say, has snuck up to four percent. We'd always hope to keep it down around two or three percent per year for the average family. If that has to sneak up to four on a crazy year, you know, where everything's getting a little more expensive, so be it. But, um, nobody is proposing across the board, raising people's taxes by eight percent. We're going to really try to tamp that back down closer to the rate of inflation per each family member. Thanks.
Clarence.
Thank you. Just to remind everyone that we have already raised everyone's by 7.3% with the fees to the sanitary sewer and, and storm sewer and the increase to the greenway fee. So we're nowhere going to be anywhere near the 2.3%. Uh, if you do eight percent and it comes out to four, you've now raised everyone's 11% for the year. So. I'm not in favor of an eight percent. In view of those fee increases, I'm almost proposing a zero percent increase in our property taxes.
Almost. Did I hear almost?
Almost. Didn't take much. Pushed me over the edge.
Sorry.
Carla?
The other thing we haven't talked about, um, very in depth is American Rescue dollars. And I know I've talked kind of lightly on it that, you know, most of the dollars for our community would be best served for improvements in wastewater, water, stormwater. And so, you know, David and I have talked about it. We've talked at department head meetings that maybe we wouldn't implement that $2 fee for improvements for infrastructure in the wa, in the wastewater and the stormwater. So that $4 would not go on the taxpayer's utility bill until we done with our American Rescue Plan dollars. And then, and then see where we're at, what we've done with those dollars. See if $2 is needed, if maybe only a dollar is needed, or just to see where we're at after we use those dollars for those improvements.
Call.
So that, 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 that would be my recommendation, if anybody wants it, would be, um, we would not implement those fees come January 1st, the $2 for the improvements, the other ones for the regular, um, maintenance and yearly expenses that we would continue to have those implemented January 1st, but not the $2.
And I'll call you, be bringing that forward here at, at a future meeting. Yep. And so, yeah, Carla did bring that up to me. I was, uh, I, I just wanted to thank Carla for that. That was, that was a very good way of looking at that and I appreciate that being brought forward. So thank you.
And I know Jason and Stephen that we've kind of looked at, you know, where we should use those dollars and, you know, kind of get a plan and what we want to do in the next few years with those, what, and we're trying to work with, um, water and see, you know, where they are with, you know, with those lead replacement and then work those projects together. So we, we are looking at those things still.
Do you, what's the window that we have to utilize those dollars?
Uh, I believe it's till like 20, we can encumber them till like 2026.
Nice. Thank you.
You know, I, I think a concern I would have in, um, not implementing the fees and relying on the American Rescue Act dollars uh, for our capital renewal expenses is we know that, that act funding is going to run out. So we're really just deferring some hard decisions where we have to trim budget, you know? Um, it's, it's an option, but I'd also look at what, what else can we do to just trim our overall budget and set ourselves up properly going forward? Not cutting off our knees a little bit here for, um, investing in utilities going forward.
Yeah. And that's why we just talked about those two, the $2, which is strictly for capital permits, which that's the reason for the American Rescue Plan dollars is to help those communities with those infrastructure needs. Uh, knowing that that's what they'd like for you to, you spend the money on because it's a one-time expense. And everything we listen to, you know, encourages that so that we use the dollars one time and it sets us in a position for the future.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Carla.
Thank you.
Just want to remind everybody, uh, this week is small business week in Minnesota to go out and, uh, talk to your small businesses, spend some money there. EDA will have it on their, uh,
Facebook.
Facebook account too. So you can see where, what's going on. Anybody else?
We have an open house tomorrow night for our land use plan. So we're in our draft stage. And then I will be getting the, I've been trying to work on getting the census tract so we can start working on our ward maps. So.
Yep.
So that's kind of where we're at, at this point. But open house tomorrow night. It's all Zoom. So if you're interested in attending, you can do it at your leisure at home. So.
Okay. Chief?
As long as you're asking. Uh, next Wednesday, the 22nd is the East Grand Forks Showcase. Uh, we are fifth annual, uh, second one that will be held up at the, um, East Grand Forks Civic Center Auditorium in the east parking lot. That's from five to seven that evening. So. Got all the East Grand Forks City departments will be, uh, on display in one manner or another. And we have a number of other agencies that will also be there with, with presentations and tables and information. So.
Who do you have in your dunk tank?
You. Me, Chief Bushy, Sheriff Tadman, um, Brandon Baseflug from the, uh, school board, uh, Brian Law from the, um, high school principal and Nancy Kadu, Northland president.
Oh, my goodness.
We all should only have to do it for about 15 minutes.
Perfect.
Nice short. And yeah, but Dunk Tank is a, is a fundraiser slash food raiser for the East Grand Forks Food Show. People can try to dunk us for either a $5 donation or, or two, um, cans, items, whatever, non-perishable food. So.
Anything else? Department heads? Nothing? We have a motion to adjourn. Move. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Means adjourned.